Recording in progress.
Thank you, Mehdi. Uh, making the our assessment of director. The caller, we're beginning.
Okay, sorry getting yelled at. My mic is now officially on.
Oh, you did get it?
Yeah. Yep. Yep, that's fine. Keep it that way. Uh, Mehdi, where are we starting? What page? And let's move forward on this next one.
Okay, so we are gonna be starting today, um, Tuesday, April fifteenth with uh assessors department. Uh, the assessment department is a contractual service there, so there is no personnel page. However, on the budget, it's gonna be page eight. We're gonna hand it over to Kim, our assessor, to talk over for few line items.
Thank you. Uh, the majority of it is just for the contract. Um, that's the three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine nine six. And then the seventeen thousand for supplies. The majority of that, I would say sixteen thousand eight hundred of it is all printing. So it's sending out the change of assessment notices to every property um, once a year, which we're legally obligated to do. And then the other portion of that is the personal property statements that were required to mail out January by January tenth every year. And then that leaves us about three, four hundred dollars for office supplies for the year.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you for your time. Any questions to the assessors? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Board of Appeals. So the. Thank you. Have a great day.
He needs the water.
The next department, team.
The next department, um, it's a quick one. It's gonna be uh the zoning board of appeal, department two forty-seven, that is on page fifteen.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Wow, my.
I'm sorry, my.
Keep the mic, you don't stop.
Take it out. Hold it, yeah.
Um, so the next department that we're gonna be going over quickly is the zoning board of appeal, that department two forty-seven on page fifteen.
Oh, it's a big budget.
Pretty much, this is just um the zoning board for like parcels and building, for the building department. I don't know exactly what else. Um, what questions you have regarding like the training or the publication newsletter, but when we go with the building and engineering department, the next uh meeting, you might be uh more.
I have no questions on this. Uh, Amanda Port, do you want to explain anything on it?
No, this is never long, just.
Okay. Awesome. You're doing a great job.
That for me.
You're doing a great job over there. Any questions from the council members on this one? A very small budget, it looks like, all in all, they're asking for eight thousand dollars.
Uh, I'm sure the only private question I have, they requested forty-five hundred. And didn't, we didn't give it to them. You, any idea what's that, what was that for?
I'm thinking the forty-five hundred was for um contractual services like weight trim and other engineering firms that may be able to assist with these types of.
I thought we had an engineer for this.
Um, that's probably why they, because he, he deals with all of the zoning board as well. He deals with the zoning board and the planning commission, the engine to assist with that.
I mean, look, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so I don't think they needed contractual services, but at the same time, uh, like next meeting when Rick and Kerry are over here next to me, then they may be able to.
I, I do know that as of right now, Kerry is not able to attend these meetings because of overtime, so I'm wondering if they're setting this aside, or if they needed additional funds for overtime, depending what it's there for. I'm not sure, but even then, that would not be sufficient to be able to say we're gonna use contractual services to pay for overtime.
No, you can't. It had to be salaries. Okay, so are we clear to move on to the next uh department?
I mean, I mean, really. Last year, contractual services was five hundred dollars, this year it's up four thousand.
That would like to make him know.
What is it?
It was requested by them. I'm not entirely sure exactly why it was requested by them. Uh, but administration decided not to give any contractual services, given the fact that we do have most likely that Ali Devison staff and he is.
Yes, 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 yes. I see it. Okay, I mean, I think at minimum, we should be able to give them at least five hundred dollars.
Would you like me to make that note right now?
Honestly, I don't think we need it.
Okay, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it? Okay. So next up, we are gonna move on to the clerk's office. That is gonna be page five on the personnel sheets and page ten on the budget. I'm gonna hand it over to clerk senior to discuss their department.
I want everybody to know that we have the best clerk in the state. I gotta stop chewing my gum, cause Angela and Vince. Going back, you do have the best clerk ever in America, in all of America, all fifty states, and each state has several cities. Hundreds of thousands of cities. There's not, there's not compared to Lincinian.
It might be fifty-one states soon.
Yeah.
Yep. So. The world, the world, the world. There's not, not, I don't even think like Lebanon doesn't have a clerk.
We haven't had one in a decade.
You know?
And staff.
Yes, cause I mean, what would we do without George? Let's give George Rano a pause for helping us out with his budget as well. Thank you. And Sally and Dana.
Everyone.
Everyone, everyone.
Elections clerk's office.
Okay, guys, I gotta get to the manager.
Yeah, we keep coming back. I mean, why, the place back there, you know, deputy clerk comes back.
Okay.
So you ready? Okay, this, I think I just need clarification from the comptroller's office, because the projected, so, so, safe for mine, salary elected, the projected activity is one oh six. But yet the requested budget for next year is one oh two. I think they included maybe longevity, but I don't know that. But it's higher this year than it is next year, so it's not, I don't think it's right.
I get it. I see it.
So I am assuming that the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five projected activity includes the longevity that she's gonna be receiving this year. Uh, but the requested budget is a, uh, the salary elected official plus a possible two percent raise, given uh the compensation board's determination of what the salary is gonna be.
Well, and I'm thinking that, but Mahdi, I think that, so you go down to the second line and it says elected seniority pay, and I think for twenty-four, twenty-five, that indeed is the two percent. But then you go to twenty-five and twenty-six, that may be seniority and longevity. So it's not clear though.
Okay.
Okay, so it could be.
So this year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, twenty-five projected activity, the longevity was included in the salary elected pay.
Yeah.
However, to make it more clear, they decided to keep the longevity and seniority together with twenty-two, five, twenty-six and budget line item, elected uh seniority pay.
That's not like fringe benefits. Okay, because the others are in fringe benefits. The other staff.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, just had, need some clarification, that's what I thought, but I wanted you guys to be aware of that too.
Can we also get that in, right?
Okay, then salaries, I think. And maybe that's the seniority pay again, because again, for the projected for twenty-four, twenty-five is one eighty-seven and it's lower, one eighty-four, seven for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
So for the projected activity for salaries, that's the uh deputy clerk, give me one second, just. So you got the deputy clerk, the one clerk three, and then the one clerk one. Um, the amounts for one eighty-seven include longevity, sick payout, vacation payout, and seniority. I can get you the exact breakdown of how the one eighty-seven was calculated and projected. However, the one eighty-four is part of the personnel sheet. Um, if you remove the city clerk from the amount on the personnel page.
Just, they didn't mention. Okay, and then, one more, Mahdi. So part-time. We had five thousand this year and we're requesting five thousand next year. However, it's only showing the, to date, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, because we're using our election staff, which is working in the clerk's office right now, so, but they don't have the ability to sign in to pay come and charge their time to the clerk's office. So until that's done, I asked him to do it, like a couple months ago. So that has to be changed, and then I'll have to do a budget amendment, so it reflects what really is happening.
Well, so what's really happening? Are we gonna see the five thousand or are we gonna exceed that?
No, I don't think we'll see. We've had Kathy coming, the deputy clerk.
Yeah, Kathy does a great job.
Other ones, yeah.
Basically, she's saying she's spending the five thousand, but it shows.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly, so I wanted to be accurate. So we'll either, either come up and, I will have to do a budget amendment since January. You know, from whenever, I'll have to go into pay comment, see what was charged to elections. So just so that you know that, I'll do a budget amendment with that. Overtime is good. Um, hospital, I don't.
No overtime.
Nothing I know of.
You better say.
Thank you. Um. Supplies, I had requested, I guess we could do the four thousand. I had requested four hundred, I think. Or four thousand, I mean, forty-five hundred and it's four thousand. So I think everything else, unless you have any questions, I think we're good.
You requested four thousand, you got four thousand.
Yeah, well, I.
You requested forty-five hundred?
Yeah. So, but I think we can, we can live with that.
Do you imagine?
We can do that, yes.
There was some extra, council chair.
Yes, sir.
There were some extra expenses, but that was a couple of years ago, scanning for the election and some equipment for scanning for the.
Uh, I, okay, we did have some extra, and, and we'll get to elections and.
It's separate?
Yeah, elections is a separate budget. Okay, so we'll get to that next if we're ready, unless you have any questions on the clerks.
I'm going.
Okay, and then really, um, one ninety for salaries for part-time, depending on how many elections. Right? What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, page six.
Page six.
Page six.
Six.
Page six? Go ahead.
Okay, really, just we can go down one ninety for um wages, fifteen thousand for overtime. Um. Fringe benefits, that's automatically calculated, right? Uh. Material supplies, twenty-five, fifty for contractual services, a thousand for mileage, repair and maintenance, a thousand. I did request twenty-eight thousand for capital outlay, and I know that the city kind of really kind of did away with most of the capital outlay. But we do need, and we're, you know, we've always got grants to purchase, I think this was your question, Councilman Catherine. We've gotten grants to purchase pretty much most of the equipment that we have in elections, the laptops, the tabulators. You know, we've, we've consolidated from twenty-seven to fifteen, so we're upgrading our equipment, our tabulators. And we did purchase nine of them through, um, I think we got four through the MMRMA reimbursement because of the ceiling link. And then s- uh, five for the grant, but we're six short. So I'll probably be appealing throughout the year, once we get to it, and it, any little bit will help in capital outlay.
It looks like we're still fifty thousand to produce, that's great.
Yeah, yeah. So that's it for elections. I did.
Madam clerk, I know that you uh that we received money from elections, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
How much did we end up receiving?
You know, okay, wait a minute, I do have a little bit here. We got a hundred and eighteen, five from presidential. For, I don't know if we received it all yet, Mahdi, but we got um early voting for August was thirteen thousand, early voting for uh November was seventeen thousand. Uh, we just, I don't know, I think it was just eight thousand. We submitted last week for reimbursement for that special January and April election that we did for a state rep for precinct date. And then we got the two grants, the fifty, the thirty thousand and the twenty-seven thousand, and then the MMRMA um reimbursement for the ceiling league. And I think that's what we're gonna settle on, so.
Do we get this every year, especially the brands, or no?
No.
No, I mean, when we, when deputy clerk Phil Matt and I were up at um Port, or.
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, thank you. By Europe Chiefs, right?
Yep.
And um they did mention that the state hopefully will be providing us with a, I don't know how much, uh, election security grant for next year. So hopefully, we'll get a little bit of money there. Um, and then, if we have just a minute, I wanna go over the revenues real quick. Cause I think maybe some of them should, are over. I'm sorry, it's page one of fifty-seven?
One fifty-seven?
It's GL one oh, oh, four, five, seven.
Four fifty-seven?
Yeah, so the one oh one, zero, 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 four, five, seven. It's the revenue for the business.
What, what, what page is it on? One, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
You're saying one fifty-seven, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the GL number.
GL number.
Is four fifty-seven.
Okay.
So it's business licensing, yeah. And they have recommended, I'm thinking, revenues as twenty thousand. Um, business licensing, the date, it's only seventy-eight hundred. I don't think that's, I think it's over, but I also had an idea that maybe soon, that we can revisit and, and maybe increase our business licensing fees. I think they're thirty dollars and fifty dollars. Like to look at the surrounding communities and see comparisons. So that could be a little bit extra revenue, but I think twenty thousand might be too much. We only have May and June, two and a half months left to, to get that.
I mean, I think the entire budget is, is over revenue.
What's that? Okay, but they got up, the recommended is fifteen or twenty.
Twenty, so I definitely probably I would adjust probably to eight thousand.
Right, so it's not even, I mean, it's.
I mean, we can go to ten.
No, seventy-eight hundred, seventy-seven right now.
If we raise the fees, you could ten.
But when we're gonna raise the fees, it's gonna take time.
So just so that you're aware that.
I think we need to adjust.
But it is, did something. And then if. And I wanna go down to, hmm. Maybe it's a little bit higher. The majority, if you go down to four eighty-four, which is animal licensing.
I already saw it.
Okay, and it's maybe two, it's not a lot, but you gotta peel the onion, you know, and that might be over two. You got fourteen, seven. The majority of the animal license money has already been collected, because it's annually and they're due by the end of February.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And.
We're definitely over on that, that fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so. I think.
To that one, we need to adjust to what, fifteen, you think?
No.
So that's too much.
I did put fifteen down.
Because you already collected fourteen, uh, seven.
Yeah, you go.
I mean, they're eight dollars and they're fifteen dollars.
So, yeah, let's, let's adjust that to fifteen.
Can we even make those just twenty dollars even?
That we would have to come in there. I mean, as a pet owner, would you wanna do that?
Twenty bucks for you?
It's.
How much is it now?
Right now, it's eighteen if they're stated or neutered, and then they're fifteen otherwise.
I don't care, as long as you don't charge permits for kids, I'm fine. I don't have pets, only kids. Let's see.
You've got some hidden we don't know about.
Confirm uh.
All the customs.
For the for the business license, you want us to drop down the recommended budget for twenty-five, twenty-six from twenty thousand?
I mean, I, I think minimum ten, so put it down to ten.
Yeah, because you're not gonna see twenty thousand, if you're only seeing seventy, eight hundred.
Even ten is high, but like if we increase the price a little bit, we can potentially see.
Okay.
If you're at thirty right now and, and a business license and you up it to forty-five, you, you might be, which is fair, or even fifty. I mean, if you're opening up a business.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty dollars.
This is cheap.
Really, I think it'd be one fifty. Uh, you're a business owner, like, what, what the hell?
Yeah.
Almost everybody. Well, you, you legit, you get it, I mean, or, I will tell you, ordinance is very good at making sure that they're getting their renewals and their, and your business license renewal. Like, they are very good at that.
And then for the animal license, you wanna drop it to fifteen thousand?
Yeah, okay. You're at twelve right now.
We're at fourteen thousand and seven.
I'm saying, yeah, yeah, you're fourteen, seven. So fifteen is a fair number.
Okay.
They were gonna get an extra five thousand, I don't know, where it's just. Look, we, we wanna see more revenue, but we have to be realistic.
And then, I'm sorry, I missed one, was birth and death certificates. If you look at four eighty-seven, obviously, it depends on if the person passes away in our city, cause we don't have a hospital, but currently it's we don't even, we're not even up to seven thousand. And we're projected for twelve thousand.
We want more people to die?
Well, we don't.
Well, we don't, I do. But maybe we could drop that a couple of thousand, just so it's more.
Yeah, I'm not volunteering to die. Everybody's gonna face it one day.
Should we adjust to seven, what, how much is the permit?
Um, how much are they, George? They're fifteen for the first one and five for each additional death certificate. And we only have, I mean.
Hold on. And I'm not trying to make a joke, so when somebody dies, you tell them you want each fifteen bucks?
It's in the funeral home. Yeah, it's the funeral home, unless. And then birth certificates, birth certificates, we might get maybe one a year, because it's, you don't have a hospital. So unless it's any at-home birth. Cause most of the time they're coming in for.
If anybody's giving birth at home, that's crazy.
So I just think twelve thousand is too much.
Yeah, we adjust to uh seven thousand for that one.
So look at that, there you go, we're starting to find some, they were really are overdoing this revenue, how many?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Any questions?
Under deficit. I don't think it's gonna call you.
You know, I had, I had a question on um. I had a question on uh election, so the first number, this is for the part-time, that's much, that's how much you spend for people helping with the election?
For the year.
For the year?
For the year, right, I mean, if we don't have but one election, then it would be half of that. You know what I mean? But right now, we have two projected for that, and then we'll be preparing next year for the gubernatorial.
That's gonna be a big one.
Yeah, because you have your governor.
And you have an independent this year that's running, a popular independent, that's gonna make it through the primary because they're gonna be on generals and independent.
So we will be gearing up for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, we're gonna have the treasurer's office, it's gonna be page eight on the personnel sheet and page sixteen on the budget.
All right, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Our favorite treasurer, how you doing?
All right, so let's go ahead and turn to the personnel page, which is page eight, as already mentioned. And you can see what's proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six. I did wanna make a comment that what I submitted during our budget discussions with the comptroller and plant Moran for the deputy was a three point two percent, which is cola for fiscal year twenty-four, but it looks like they adjusted that down to, what is that, about two and a half, two percent, yep, two percent? So that's fine, but I just wanted to make that note. They're all going to two percent. Okay, I just wanted to make a note that I did submit a different amount based on cola. Uh, the other thing I wanna um ask.
Let's go down line by line, can we?
Oh, all right, you wanna start treasurer?
Yeah.
So treasurer set by compensation commission? So, and I imagine they'll be meeting after this election, right, in January? And the deputy treasurer, we just talked about, we just discussed. Deputy Treasurer Garcia has been with the city over thirty years in that position.
Uh, treasurer, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Can we just get to the two directly to the lines instead of explaining everybody's background, please? Cause I wanna go through it to know the numbers, I just.
And we're going, and we don't have to go through the personnel page, I'm sorry.
You don't wanna do that?
Your office does a phenomenal job, but we just don't need everybody's resume.
Okay, we won't do that, so, but I do have a question about my part-time is not listed on here. And that is really critical to this office. It's on the budget, but not on the personnel page, that's fifteen thousand dollars, I just want you to be aware of that, but we're gonna go. It is in the budget, that's, I said that, yep, so I already shared that, but I just wanna note that for your personnel page, so now if you go to the budget, which is page seventeen, correct?
Sixteen, sixteen.
All right, we start with um, you you don't want me to go line item by line item? Maybe I should just let you ask questions?
Go ahead, go line item by line item.
I don't know, I wanna make sure I answer your questions correctly. Salary elect, uh, that is, of course, the compensation commission, salaries. You got uh zero for retirement prior years, part-time again is mentioned fifteen thousand. Overtime is a thousand, we rarely use overtime. Um, and let's move down, hospital insurance, life insurance, general government pension, fringe benefit is uh not something that we control within the office, that's numbers that are provided to us. Supplies, you can see our supplies, five thousand, which is the same from twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. Dues members.
How come you requested seven thousand, Madam Treasurer?
I'm sorry?
For supplies, it shows here you supply, you asked for seven thousand instead.
I did because of cost of supplies and inflation, but they set it at five thousand, which is fine, I will make do with what I'm given.
How come the activity through uh March is only twelve hundred so far?
Because I usually order things in bulk at one time and then I have to do another major order going into the last quarter of this fiscal year, so it's it's based on when I spend, when I order. So the timing, it looks like there's, and I also think there's um, that has to be updated, cause we've had several staple orders that I don't see in the general ledger yet, so you will see that if you look at your actual budget, which I did send everybody. I reconciled that, there's a few more expenditures there included. But that's what happens, I order only so many times a year, I keep everything stocked to make sure we don't run out of things.
That's being fiscally responsible, I appreciate that.
And I can plan that way, right, so that way I stay where I need to be within my budget. Um, which you'll see for my budget to actual, I'm coming in at about fifty-three percent, where we, our mark is seventy-five percent for this time of year. So uh, you ready to move on dues membership? Dues membership uh has gone from eight fifty to nine hundred, that's because several organizations that we're members of have increased their dues a little bit because their expenses incur are higher due to inflation and other things. Contact contractual service is going to be the same thing, you're gonna see an increase from seventy thousand to seventy-five. That is everything for consulting fees, tax payments, printing bills, mailing bills, everything. And that is for summer and winter, at one time, that line item did not include summer, it would appear on the the next year, we cannot do it that way because we incur the cost in June, this fiscal year. That's why you see that. Uh, mileage is five hundred to five hundred, so mileage will be for me doing bank runs and things, I actually don't redeem that that often. I probably shouldn't tell you that, cause I don't, I don't charge the city for my, you know, gas or anything. I just do it, it's part of my job.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Uh, travel, education and training, I thought with our discussion with the comptroller and plan around, we were gonna combine those. Uh, but they are still separated, coming in at thirty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred and four hundred to four hundred. That is accurate for conferences, convention trainings, um, the training line item, I have uh trips for my staff. Right, they, we do online trainings like cash handling, internal scrolls, bless you, by the way.
So I see you requested forty-nine, but they gave you thirty-five.
Yeah, well, sometimes you take what you get.
Are you able to work with that?
Um, I would love to have more because I have a lot of new staff. And I do want them to be certified in cash handling and internal affairs, and these are national organizations that are training. But I think your department is as good as the training you empower them with. And so I'm a big proponent of education and continuing it, I would.
How many new staff you have?
Um, I have two right now, I've got one more hopefully coming on.
Now, do you, are you as the treasurer? Do you teach, do you have any training lessons, do you teach any training lessons?
I do, I do.
When I'm at, like, my office, like. And their facilities will come out and.
What I do when I go to trainings, and I have to keep my certifications, by the way. I'm a Michigan Certified Public Treasurer, also Advanced Certified Public Finance Investment Manager, and I just earned my Certified Public Finance Administrator. Thank you, that's okay, thank you, it's part of my job. But I tell you what, I have to keep that up, but I always will bring back training to my staff and share, always.
I'm definitely supporting training, especially for you are members of your department, I'm also sure I'll be okay if we raise it maybe five hundred, make it four thousand even. Hopefully we can work with that, I know it's not whatever you ask for, but it's something, you know.
I'm I'm all for that.
I I appreciate it.
Training for the treasurer.
Taking it from thirty-five to four thousand.
Any other council member, uh, any questions, or are they okay with that?
Four to four thousand, correct, five, four thousand, thank you, thank you for that, counsel. And for acknowledging the importance of training and education for our staff.
Thank you, handing our money, they better be trained.
Yes, I I will, and I I'm not, I don't believe in bragging or boasting, cause my mom says pride comes before the fall. But I think our treasury team has done an outstanding job, I think the way they work with the residents and they advise, not advise, give advice, but direct them to the appropriate department and give them resources has been really instrumental in setting a pace for us. Um, capital outlays, last item, we do a standard thousand.
How much did you use in training uh last year?
Where's, do you have that?
Thirty-five hundred.
Which was it?
No, so far it's twenty-eight.
Sorry, I was thinking year to date.
Up to date?
Uh, two thousand eight oh seven is what it's saying. Because we have newer staff.
That's why we're saying go up.
I will tell you, Councilman, that anybody who knows me knows I won't spend money if I don't have to, right, I've said that before. Even with attorney fees and.
You do a good job with that.
I I won't, and and that is why the um budget to actual for March thirty-first. Again, I'm like barely at fifty percent when a seventy-five percent mark. Because I don't believe in spending where I don't need to.
Full support, Madam Treasurer, for uh for your staff to be trained, and especially with the demeanor, I mean, when you're taking somebody's money. Better take it in a nice way.
And they take, they take a lot, by the way, and they hear a lot.
Well, let's let's hear, hang on, councilman wants, or are you still going, I'm sorry?
No, I'm good with that, yeah, yeah. I didn't wanna. I was just curious, I'm, you know, the, I don't know if that was the exact month, well, to date. You plan, I know, March, April, I mean, you you plan any more training this year?
Oh, yes, yes, we do a lot of trainings in May, month of May is big. Uh, there is the Advanced Institute through the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, uh, the Michigan, I always get this mixed up, GFOA. Also has some trainings, and APT, which is the Association of Public Treasurers of United States and Canada, always has online trainings for our staff.
Do you have an estimate, how much it's gonna cost?
Not off the top of my head right now, I'm sorry, I can get that to you by email.
Thousand would be enough?
For the next fiscal year, I have to be mindful of this fiscal year's budget and finish below that amount.
So this fiscal year, you still have about seven hundred to work with.
And most likely, I'm, because I'm gonna be short, I'll pay out of pocket for my trainings, is what's gonna happen. Like that training in May through Michigan uh Certified Public Treasurers, MMTA, that's about a thousand dollars at least. And so it's required to, for me to keep my certification, and I'll pay that out of pocket, the difference, I already am prepared to do that. Okay, anything else on training or education? All right, and then the last item, as I mentioned, is the um capital outlay. Uh, it's not often that we're replacing things, but every once in a while, something happens. So like last year, we had the cash counter go down in the middle of summer tax time. And thank you to the honorable body and council chair and pro tem for approving the emergency purchase, cause that's a big owie. And uh, we put in a thousand for that every year, just in case, it's a just-in-case placeholder.
Do we still have a lot of points at the American Express?
We we do, about twenty-four thousand dollars worth. So those are points that you can use. And and that's one thing that I know I always look at first, if I need something, if I can use points, I will. Cause I think we should use that, and that's for any and all departments, by the way.
Were were we able to use the points to buy uh the cash machine?
No, not the cash machine, but there were things like the dry erase, like our calendar board and all that, that came out of the points. Also, some of your IT expenses came out of points as well.
Filing cabinet, we wanted last, last meeting, can we purchase it with it?
If you can find it on Amazon, you can purchase it.
Angela sent it to me already. So the councilman, former councilman must get.
How much was it? Yeah, fire, fireproof? Okay, let's uh, yeah, let's uh, can we use? Which board was it, was the pension?
So the pension board would just need to propose it to you all? And then you would just authorize the use of the points, cause I will never use points without your authorization.
Let's uh, because we're supposed to give it to them, so we we can take it off their uh budget, and let's put an agenda for next week. Use the points to buy them the file cabinet, let's do it. Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Yeah, absolutely, um, the only other thing I have for you, if we're finished with that item, is under revenue. Which is on page two, and their interest on investments, I'll read you the general ledger. One oh one, zero, 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 six, seven, three, point, zero, zero, zero. Interest on revenue, I uh had emailed all of you and handed you a hard copy of our quarterly report for investments, I've kept you updated on how much we make in interest revenue for the city.
What's the number, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, let's go back.
One oh one, zero, zero, zero.
Six, seven, three, point, zero, 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 interest on investment.
Okay, interest on investment, I'm sorry.
So last year, we made over a million and a half, one point five million, excuse me, one point five million. And I gave you the quarterly report where you could see our trend, we're doing very well, exceptionally well with how we were making money on the idle money. However, this particular item, I believe, is interest on general funds, since it's in the uh fund balance, general fund balance. I will tell you, because of interfunds, I can rarely, rarely invest general fund monies, so that two hundred thousand, if you did direct pay from water or local streets or whoever TIFPA, and we didn't have to wait for the money to come back through interfunds. I could be investing that money and making more money for the city. So, I just wanna leave you with that thought, food for thought, cause I'm all about making that money for the city anywhere we can. And I think we're all interested in that, but I think the direct pay is also something the city has been flagged on, on audits for many years. And I think we'd be, if you direct pay directly from the, like, library account for their bills, which I think you're doing pretty much at this point, for library. Um, but the general fund would not have to be paid back, and it does create a problem for cash flow, as you know. So, I'm asking for that consideration, just something food, food for that. That's all I have.
Um, I'm going to add to the credit card points. You use them to offset some of the supply costs, sometimes save there.
If they're ordered through Amazon, yes, we can use, we can use points. You're asking, I'm sorry, councilwoman, you're asking me if I'm, I can use points for my supplies? Well, my supplies, if I order through Amazon, yes, but we order through uh Staples Advantage right now. But I could, I I'm sure I could do.
How many points do you have, you said?
Twenty-four thousand? Dollars, value.
Twenty-four thousand dollars?
That's value in dollars, yes. It's a little over two million points.
Everybody's supply, we purchased on Amazon.
Yeah, I mean, because we're running lean this year, so.
Whatever you direct, counsel, I will leave it to you, this honorable body, to make that decision. Uh, my job is to administrate what your decision is legislated. I do have one thing I want you to consider, counsel, and then I'll be done, cause I know you want me to get out of here, you're, I see. I see the uh, do you wanna go ahead and ask your question, and then I can talk about that?
Going back to the interest on investments, so far it says activity is hundred and seventy-one thousand. But they have the projected till the end of this fiscal year is to go up to two fifty, are we expecting another seventy thousand?
No, not from general fund, because I very, very rarely am able to invest any money from general fund because it's needed for cash flow, for accounts payable checks and payroll, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
Council chair, that's another seventy thousand that's been projected for next year, actual.
Again, if the interfunds, if I did not have to wait on interfunds to happen, or if we did not do interfunds whatsoever, cause we do direct pay. I would have more money in general fund, which means it'd be idle money that I could use for investments. But as it is, I would not expect it to make that much.
So what, I mean, my worry here, I mean, they projected this, seventy thousand for this year, and they did for next year, so that's another seventy thousand.
Yes, I'd be cautious of overstated revenue.
You wanna, do you guys wanna, you wanna adjust that?
That's a counter.
We'll know where we're looking at.
Can you make that adjustment down there for us, George, Councilman, I'm on you as well, please? And uh, can you also adjust that, by the way, like, I wasn't kidding when I said here in the beginning. This is like, we're like, we're really over projecting on this. You know, sixty-two million dollars in revenue, the city has never seen yet, and we have no ARPA funds. Like, let's, let's be mindful of these things, we also don't wanna just throw a budget.
Like, let's, let's be mindful of these things. We also don't want to just throw a budget just to make ourselves look pretty, right? Six, seven, three.
Seven, three. Madam Chair, do you think one seventy, one seventy-five would be okay?
I would, yes. Yes. I think if we can get the inter-funds down to what we talked about with, uh, the controller, is to a monthly, being done monthly regularly, is that you have a better chance of doing that? I'm waiting to see if we can get that monthly, because inter-funds have not been any regularity, regularity done, completed.
I, I saw you shaking your hand, your head. Something you don't. Taking that to one seventy-five, that's not.
So basically, in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four activity, we had two hundred ninety-nine thousand, uh, in interest on investments. The treasurer is correct in trying to make sure that events are done regularly too, so that the general fund could invest money. Uh, the money, the numbers themselves were compiled by Prime Moran, and they are taking averages over the years to make, ensure that they are somewhat accurate. Now, like I said at the beginning, these are all estimates. If you guys would like to drop the estimates down, just so you aim lower, like, set the floor and aim higher, that way you get.
Yeah, I don't wanna, yeah, you estimate really high, and we're not getting, just, like, we're not getting the money this year.
Yeah.
So this is another, I mean, we're all more deficit, I mean, sorry to say, but I don't wanna do the C and D for next year.
You guys let me know what you feel is, uh, accurate to put into the recommended budget for twenty-five, twenty-six for this line item, and I can go ahead.
I would say, yeah, take it down to one seventy-five, please.
One seventy-five?
Just need to be more realistic of whatever we're expecting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's better to under-project than over-project, what on your revenue? And then, of course, we know it's a living document, so you can always amend. But I'd rather go under on your revenue, and if you get more, then great, right? The, the last thing is the one percent admin fee that the treasurer presents as a resolution to this honorable body. The one percent admin fee is added to your tax bills. Um, it is restricted funds where it can be used for anything tax-related. So it covers a hundred percent of the assessor's office, the Board of Appeal, and then treasurer's office, because of, based on my calculations and running studies, about sixty percent. I'm coming up, um, I did request the actual numbers, so I could do a comparison for inflows, outflows. I did not get that information, so I'm going off of the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. I'm coming up with a administration fee that's needed, it's seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, sixty dollars. However, collected to date for tax year twenty-four is nine hundred twelve thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Is that something we have, Madam Treasurer?
I did email you all.
Uh, you don't have, I don't have.
So you do have a surplus. I'm concerned that that surplus is in general fund and is being used for things that aren't included under the General Tax Act of two oh six of eighteen ninety-three, because that is a difference over a hundred thousand. Um, and I, I do think we used to track it in a separate general, um, one percent admin account for the, the bank account, and to not do inter-funds from it, to pay directly as needed. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because the one percent admin fee is restricted under General Tax Act. Okay, for tax-related items, and this could bring taxation relief to your taxpayers if there is room to do so, for your consideration.
So like, this, I think this is a separate conversation. I love this conversation you wanna have here. I know that you proposed saying, you know, it's time to eliminate the, the one percent admin fee. You've asked for this a couple of times, but like,
What person?
Seeing that there are, we have no revenue coming into the city, and seeing that we are using this, this tax admin fee. If you want to remove it and bring down the relief, can you show the city how we can make an additional eight hundred thousand dollars a year with being able to remove this admin fee?
So not to remove it completely, but to reduce it. You could reduce it and still maintain what you need, like if it's point seven five percent, for example. The only thing I can give you is what I gave you in the email, what I just read off. Because when I asked for the actual numbers, they weren't provided to me. I can't give you actual numbers. And the thing is, you need to remember, that admin fee can't be used for general fund items.
It's restricted according to the nineteen.
So you can't use it for a general fund item.
So this thing, the admin fee is added on the taxes, on the tax after the, everything is calculated.
Correct.
So it's not on the mill, it's just.
No. It's added to the tax bills based on the total.
But it's not really much on every taxpayer, it's like. It's almost not, yeah, but when somebody's taxes, on that state, it's thirty, forty thousand dollars, that's, yeah, almost five hundred bucks.
There, there is a, a fee that you charge when people ask for a copy of their taxes.
Yes. We charge a dollar per customer if they're, uh, P R E.
Uh, how much have you been earning?
Um, I don't have that number in front of me. It's not that great deal.
One dollar, she said.
It's one dollar for each homeowner, P R E. If they have a P R E, and if they're like a rental property, it's five dollars. It's not real significant, but I will get the figures for you. You want the fees, I got you.
I, I, I don't even think, yeah.
Okay. I will email that to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Treasurer.
Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Any, from any council members, councilwomen? Anybody? Thank you. Great work, Madam Treasurer. Thank you very much for what you, that you do.
So next up, we're gonna have Parks and Recs. Uh, this is gonna be page sixteen on the Melbourne sheets and page twenty-five on the budget.
Forty-five? Page forty-five?
Forty-five.
Yep. Can, can we do the revenue for it first, before we go through this, uh, budget? Can we do the revenues for the Parks and Recreation first? I want to make sure that we're not like over-promising in order of delivering like.
What page was it?
Um, twenty-five. So the Parks and Recs is page twenty-five on the budget. Revenues are on page one and two, uh, specifically for the Parks and Recs.
Just give us the line item, if you don't mind doing the revenue for us, maybe?
Yeah.
Director, great job on the, uh, egg hunt event over the weekend, the beautiful one.
I'm so sorry I couldn't be there. I really, really wanted to be there, but everybody raved about it. I missed you. I missed you. I'm sorry. Bear with me with all this, uh, I've been working on today. I've been here sixty days, so sixty days.
You're, you're gonna do great.
It's a lot to absorb, knowing how everything works. To get to this point, knowing, looking at every, every deficiency that we have, every park, every rec center, and learning all the new procedures. So it has been endless, and I'm still, and, and then it's, it's only just begun. And in that short time, putting on an egg hunt, uh, like that, and then working on Summer Fest, which that's a short window to be putting on a festival, um, it's a lot to put in. But a lot of research goes into everything. The first thing on my mind is obviously looking at what we're gonna do and the quality events. When we talk about quality, right now, we're at about a three, and I'm a ten. So understand that I have to redo and rebuild every, I'm building an apartment almost from the ground up. Everything we're doing, everything we're buying, everything I'm doing is to look at how are we gonna save money? You know, like, I looked at, uh, just for some examples real quick before we get into this. I looked at Summer Fest, we're spending three thousand dollars at signs. I spent four hundred dollars, buy a vinyl cutter. I'm never gonna have to buy another sign again. We're gonna make them ourselves. I looked at the costs that we're spending on audio and video and lighting equipment. It runs six thousand to twenty thousand a year. If I have to rent it twice, I'm gonna buy it. So I was able to buy all the lighting we need today for a thousand dollars. I'm gonna use that for probably four or five events. So it just goes on and on.
I love this guy.
Yes.
I, I gotta ask you just for one favor. I know this was a little off-topic.
Mm-hmm.
But for, which I'm always gonna call Spirit Festival, um, I hope we can change the name back to the Spirit Festival. I just, you, you, you tell me. I, that's, I can go in any direction you want. Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, because that's what we grew up with.
Yeah, we, we, Summer Fest was never the thing. It was called the Spirit Festival.
It's not even in the summer.
So if you wanna make that change, that would be great. If you want, Councilman wants to put the resolution forward, I, I, I'll make sure he has it on.
He'll do it.
A placeholder will be added for Madam Clerk, that, for have that on there. Um, but yeah, it should be called the Spirit Festival.
That is, I mean, I've gone through, I'm, I'm, I'm just, that's not anywhere I wanna go. I have one request.
Hmm? The city of Livonia, the city of Plymouth, city of Northville, city of Canton, and Dearborn. All do the first three days, the first hour that they're opened, it is open for those disabled seniors and those people and children. Dearborn Heights is the only city that does not open up the rides for those, for, for our, 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 our disabled community, you know? And, and it bothers me, because every year I make that request, please, offer this to our seniors, offer this to our disabled, uh, veterans, our disabled people in the community, everybody. We just put together a disability commission. And so my request is, please, for the first hour before we open, offer to, to the disability community, allow them to be able to enjoy their, you know, the, the activities at the festival, and not just to those in Dearborn Heights, but to the entire surrounding community, because they do that. And so I have relatives that are, you know, have some disabilities, and they're, you're seeing them, they're being enjoying these festivals in different, you know, municipalities and different cities, but here comes Dearborn Heights, and we never put them first, and we never put them forward, so. Please just have that, and if, and if we can actually publicize it, okay, we are going to offer one, two, and three for the first hour and the first three days.
Are you saying just restrict the time for them to go?
If we open at twelve?
I can, I can tell you, give me the easiest request that you could possibly do.
Thank you.
I'm the one to put that together for the last eighteen years.
Good.
So I know it inside out. It's very simple. To work with the ride company, I know how it's handled. I know the problems with it. That's, just consider that done. That's, that's the easiest thing you've asked me already.
Thank you.
Uh, that, that's, that's very simple.
And then I know that, I know also, there were like, at the, at the Spirit Festival, there were many, uh, vendors that would come. Last year, we missed, I missed a vendor that used to give the roasted almonds. I was so mad. I was so mad. And I went there for the roasted almonds, and guess what? He wasn't there this year.
Right.
So I hope we can get the roasted almond.
I'll have to look into that one.
That's honor. If you can get a hold of the commissions, the disability commission, and probably the veterans' commission, maybe they can help advertise exactly what you're trying to do.
Correct. We work, we work with them. They help really facilitate that and get the word out to all those in need. And, um, and then the, the big part of it is working with the, uh, the amusement, you know, kind of carnival concession. Explaining to them how to handle this whole thing, what time they have to open it, how it's going to work. Um, obviously, I have all those answers.
Uh, thank you.
But I have it. I, I, it's, it's pretty fine, fine-tuned.
So that's, that was my only request. Thank you. Councilwoman Brier.
Right now, what we do is we spend three to four hours of the first day dedicated to seniors, veterans, and disabled people. We feed them, we have vendors, and, uh, we play bingo, and it goes over very well.
That's, that's the, uh, the.
Jubilee.
The jubilee. That's, I'm talking like, and the, you know, people enjoy the rides.
Oh, the ride.
And, and, and things like that. There's no long lines and.
So everything's been, has been reexamined. The jubilee, I've already sat and talked a bit. We've already had focus groups with all the seniors. Said, what do you like? What do you don't like about the jubilee? How are we gonna do this? How are we gonna do it different? And I tell you, I don't like to do the same thing twice. So I told the, the seniors, here's, here's where we're going with it. Do you like this idea? They're like, sounds wonderful. So I, I took, I made notes that every one of them, that's all gonna change. I've reimagined the whole festival, just the whole layout, the, the flow of traffic, uh, everything. It, it, it's gonna look like a whole different festival, because it just wasn't on the level I think we should have. So it's just the beginning. Obviously, you can only do so much in this short amount of time. Let me tell you, it, it is a race to, to book acts and things. They're usually all been done almost a year from now. All the better ones. So I really had to push and, um, and, uh, pull every stopout I can to get what we need to get in there, to get it going. Some of them, you know, I'd like to have better, but that's something for next year. But I mean, we, we have a really good lineup, and we're gonna promote it right. Um, we, we have a lot going there. So that's, that's like all the things I've been working on. Um, and, and you'll see them, the, the, you know, the, the egg hunt, uh, no overtime time was used. There was just three of us employees there to facilitate the whole thing. We had eight hundred people show up, you know? It needed some fine tuning, because we didn't expect eight hundred people. Um, but in generally, it went well. The concepts went well, but we've taken notes. The whole, next year will be, uh, just entirely amazing. And that's how everything's gonna be. It's gonna be better.
What's the set date for the festival, you know?
The date?
Of the.
I believe it's five through eight. Starts on Wednesday with the carnival opening, um, and then Thursday with seniors.
June, right?
Yes. Yes.
You know, the Eid is June seventh. You know, one of the Eid's, it's on June seventh.
I believe I noticed that that blended with that, yes.
Most likely, you're gonna expect even more people.
And that's a good problem to have.
I think this is a great time, though, too. Maybe we can.
Yeah, and those, and those are things that, you know, I've looked at that festival, like, how can we make money? I know I make a lot of money on the carnival. You know, getting more people in means more money for us, uh, for the carnival. The carnival, beverage service, booth fees have gone up. I mean, we spend a lot of money to make that happen. I'm looking at fine-tuning the hours. Uh, keeping overtime down is, is vital, and keeping it secure, keeping, you know, um, making sure we have enough security.
Get to this budget, and we'll talk about the spirit.
Right, so.
Excited about it.
Uh, we'll be probably in the next council meeting, you'll be getting the whole budget for the festival and the whole concept out, goes to.
Thank you. Um, what pages are you said, maybe?
Twenty-five and sixteen.
Twenty-five and sixteen?
So it's sixteen on the personnel sheet, twenty-five on the budget. If you want to look at the revenues quickly, uh, we have.
Yeah, walk me through, hold on, before you do that. Yeah, let's walk through the revenue. On what page is that? One or two?
Uh, it's gonna be page two.
Okay. What numbers?
So account number one, zero, one, zero, 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 six, seven, zero, zero, two, zero. That's recreation programs. We are budgeting for seventy-five thousand there. Activity to date, uh, through March thirty-first is sixty-nine, so that seventy-five does seem reasonable.
This is, uh, revenue, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so we have budgeted, uh, twenty twenty-four. Projected would be seventy, but we still don't even have the festival yet, and we're ready.
Well, the festival is a separate line item.
Is it separate?
It's a separate line item.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm gonna show you the festival in the.
Are we expecting any more, uh, coming in?
That would be.
Director.
Uh, yes. So understand that most of these numbers of income and expenses were compiled by the controller's office. Very little input from me. They said, here's your money, make it work. I can probably make that work. I mean, I'm going on that revenues. Right. Same thing on revenues. They said, these are the revenues. The way we did revenue and what we charged is just, I can't even speak.
I mean, this, this looks like a good number. I mean, they expected seventy thousand, but already, we already have sixty-nine, three eighty-seven. Are we expecting way more the next couple of months?
Uh, not in the next couple of months. Um, in the next year, you will, because they're all new events. They're all unadded events that we never had before. We're improving events, and I've only increased it slightly. I mean, very sensitive to pricing. You know, it's not like things are gonna jump up twenty dollars, they're gonna jump up five. But the five, the difference will be, uh, night and day. So, um, everything we do, I mean, we're looking at fields, we're looking at meeting rooms, we're looking at banquet space, we're looking at all those things. Uh, we have a few expenditures that we're looking at, you know, right now, Cantfield Center generates almost nothing. And for, um, approximately, I think it's like, uh, twenty thousand dollars, and I have here. Uh, I can, you can invest twenty, and I can make you, where is it? Right here. Uh, you can invest thirty into the banquet department, and conservatively, I can make you, uh, you can invest twenty-two, three twelve, and I can make you thirty, and that's conservative. I don't try to over-project. Um, that Cantfield could be a goldmine for us. It just needs a little polish to, to, to make it.
We can't get a grant for that twenty-two somehow?
We probably could, but the timeline on that is just way too long. And I want to start making money as fast as I can. I can't bear to look at nobody coming in that building and, and not having a, there's no revenue source there.
Do we have that twenty-two on the budget for next year?
Uh, I'd ask for it, but then that was taken out of it. But twenty-two, that, that's for, what that's basically for is ball treatments, thirty-two banquet tables, and two hundred and fifty-six chairs. That's what I need. Right now, I don't need anything. I don't have a room that you can use. Um, but I think when you see it, you're gonna say, how did you do this? It, it's, 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 um.
Talk, I have some ideas.
I have some too, and when, and I can give you, I'm gonna give you the outline and, and, and the, uh, the, the concepts and kind of the renderings to show you what it'll look like. And, and, and there you go. It'll be on its way. It'll be needed for this whole city. I mean, for everything we do.
I mean, if you look at just for chairs and tables, can we just rent the hall and they can, I mean, there's a lot of people out there for the tables and chairs.
You can, but you're gonna have a harder time doing it. You know, it's, it, the cost of everything is going, just skyrocketed. So renting tables, fifteen, twelve dollars apiece. You know, chairs, the same thing. It gets really priced. Chairs, the same thing. It gets really pricey. So when you rent the room, people kind of expect the tables and chairs. Now there are add-ons we'll do. Like if you want a stage, you want a sound system, you want, um, uh, there, there's a whole bunch of extras we put in, so we charge you for the stage. We have, we have our own linen. I mean, linen, uh, linen gets to the police.
I like that director, but isn't that more work on our staff?
Uh, it's not that bad. It's really, it's really pretty easy. Basically, we're renting a room and the rest, um, is, the only thing we really have is to keep somebody there and of course clean it when it's over. Um, but the people that facilitate it, they're the ones that are going to set it up, decorate it, you know, bring in their caterer. It'll inspire, you know, business to, to all of our businesses here. They're going to love it.
I agree.
Florists, uh, restaurants, I mean, some of them are going to make a bundle on it.
I mean, I rented one of the rooms one time, that I remember I actually did, uh, across from your office.
Hmm.
I think it was for Thanksgiving.
Right.
It's pretty blue, it's pretty tight.
Yeah, it is. So it, there's a big demand for a space that can hold two hundred and fifty people. That's what everybody doesn't have. And this city doesn't have a lot of space. We have no hotels, we have no, you know, we have some banquet halls, but they're really pricey. There's, there's a lot of graduations and, and showers and, and then things of smaller level that, that people really want. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm talking to people every day that come in the door and I show them the room and they go like, wow, this is just like the right size. It just doesn't look very good. It looks like a gym. You know, and we had to change that. And that's something, that's what we did. In Dearborn, we took, uh, I took a roller ring and turned it into a banquet hall. And it went from making fifty thousand dollars a year to five hundred. The projection was three years. It made its money back in one. So maybe know it's there.
I have a question. Wasn't there gymnastic equipment set up in there? Is it still there?
There is no, no, no equipment. The gymnastics group, um, left and got into their like own building and, and moved.
All right. Yeah, because that was a big deal for a while there, not to do anything with that center because of the gymnastics.
Correct, yes. So obviously big loss, but that's what usually happens when you're making that kind of money. I think we're making like sixty thousand a year from them. Um, so now the challenge is to make something out of it and bring the money back in. Again, we can't sit there and not be bringing money in.
They have a facility in Burn City now, their own facility, in addition to their one in Russell.
Yep.
And egg.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
That brings up the question, are we going to open Warren Valley? That would be a great place.
We don't own Warren Valley, we leased it out.
I know, but we have a tenant.
Yeah. Yeah, we do own it. Yes, we are, we are going to make revenue off it. I agree. I agree. That's actually like, that's going to make, I think, uh, eventually become a staple to our community. As long as, when you look out the window, it's flooded.
I know you met, last time you mentioned pickleball, can we do a pickleball at Canfield?
Yeah.
Everybody's talking about it now.
You could, but there's really no, there's, we do a really good job at it, uh, at Young Center now. Basically, the concept is we're keeping, uh, uh, the Richard Young Center is it's more of our sports complex. So basketball rentals, we can make a lot of money on that, pickleball, uh, volleyball. Everything's happened over there. We do have one meeting room that we, that's very popular. It is always in demand. We have one meeting room that we're using there, but everything else, um, is, is all focused on.
And, and the Panthers use the meeting rooms a lot. I've had, I've been a part of their meetings several, several times at, uh, Richard A Young Center, they borrow that meeting, or they use that meeting.
Right. So we're trying to, we're trying to use Ray for Sports and then Canfield for events and special events and events that we're creating. So we're creating things that are going to bring in money. So we're going to have, you know, a, a Halloween fest, you know? Five dollars to get in, it's not like a lot, but it will add up. Um, our, of course, our spirit festival is there. Um, the, um, uh, of course daddy daughter dances, mother son dances. Uh, they could be great revenue generators. So a lot of those are all going to be coming in, uh, through Canfield as well as rental revenue. And, and we're all about, I mean, we're trying to recover money. So based on that, and, and, and if we can get these things in there, we'll probably go from seventy-five thousand to probably about a hundred and fifty thousand. And that's where we want to go with a very small investment.
Thank you. Let's, let's get ahead with this, Maddy.
So now we got the Young Center revenue, which is one zero one zero 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 six seven zero six nine two. We are budgeting one hundred thousand dollars of revenue, like expected for that amount.
You think we're going to get there?
Uh, that is something that.
We're not only going to get there, we're going to exceed that. We've already made, made a lot of changes, not a lot of revenue sources there, but.
Six seven zero six nine two. Okay, look, I'm going to be honest with you. I have a lot of hopes, but I'm not going to change that number. But I, I think you're going to do it. So I'm going to, don't let us down.
Oh, we're not, no, we're not.
Okay.
Nope. No, we're, we're, believe me, we, we work on it every day. I mean, there were no membership cards. We've got that, the way things were charged for people, we, we've tightened up everything. So you'd be amazed how much, how much we can change things just right there.
Okay.
It looks like so far, uh, revenue.
This is for the year, but he believes he's going to exceed it for the following year.
Yeah, but we're at sixty, almost at sixty-six. We have budgeted for a hundred thousand. We only have three months left, not even.
It's, it's inching in on the summer.
Yeah, still have May and June. Are you going to make over thirty-five thousand in May and June?
No.
Oh, no, this is the young center.
Everything we're doing, everything that we're doing there, we're fixing things, improving things, getting everything in the right alignment. Uh, it's all for like a July first fiscal year start.
No, 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 I'm not talking about next year. I'm sorry, director. I was talking about this year. Like we're, I think we're going to be short.
This year we are, but he's saying next year.
Yeah, I'm not talking about it. I'm just talking about, I was worried about this year. Are we going to go over the festival too here? Yeah, it's, uh, the two lines down, two lines down.
Okay, so let's finish up the next line.
So next one is the senior trips. Uh, we are budgeting seventy-five, one second. That's one zero one zero 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 six seven one zero zero zero. That is budgeting for next fiscal year is seventy-five thousand of revenue.
Okay. And then we only use thirty-four this year, but we budgeted seventy.
We brought in thirty-four. They said we're going to bring in seventy. We only brought thirty-four. So that's another.
It's something that, uh.
Thirty-five thousand.
That's something that Parks and Rec director would have been able to answer. Unfortunately, Kim did retire at the beginning of the year. Uh, Martin could, uh, talk more about the senior trips for the next, next facility and what he expects out of them.
Your estimation is an additional five thousand on bringing that in. Look, I think you should take that number down to seventy.
Well, if you want to hear what.
Stiff competition with the Planet Fitness and.
Yeah, and, and because of that, I'm not really looking at any significant income in fitness. Where our fitness area is not, nowhere on caliber.
No, only one uses councilman council.
Right.
Not anymore.
You cannot compare it. So there, that wasn't taken into consideration at all. I, Planet Fitness just blows us away, especially at that price. So, uh.
Yeah, but we're, we're not looking at the Young Center renovation. Uh, we're looking at the senior trips, six seven one zero 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 zero. We only generated.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and we're expected, projected as seventy thousand. We're off by thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. The reality is, and now this year we're projecting seventy-five thousand. We're not even going to make the additional thirty-six thousand, six hundred.
I agree. In fact, if you look at my paper here, I have that in bread. Um, because I said that is way over and I'm going to talk to our trip coordinator who does a great job to find out why this revenue is over. The, the only thing that, that we did not do is we usually have a big Mackinac Island trip, extremely popular. They did not do that this year, but we.
But still, that's not thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right, yeah. So I'm, I'm trying to see what's going on there.
Forty?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, uh, as soon as I see that, uh, I'm going to talk to her because I'm almost to the point, knowing how busy our trips are, is I, I'm afraid that maybe money's being coded in the wrong department or something.
I'm not sure.
Let me, uh, let, let, council chair.
Let me explain to what's happening here. In the beginning of this meeting, I started off by saying, whoa, sixty-two million dollars? And so the reality is we're, we are, we are in a deficit. Because our revenue, which is exponential, is what we're bringing in or what we're spending. We're spending this much, but we're only bringing in this much. So what's happening is to make it seem pretty, they just increased everything by five to ten to twenty thousand dollars and they made the revenue seem like, whoa, we're up here, but really we're spending still up here. The truth is we need to stop spending and we need to give realistic numbers. But when you say things like, oh, seventy-five thousand dollars for senior trips, like no, who, who, what, what? How are we even putting our seniors in a position where we're saying we want to take money from our seniors? Like that's, that doesn't make any sense. If anything, we should be giving to our seniors and saying, we don't want any money from our seniors. So the truth is, this number is not a realistic number, Maddy.
So keep in mind that the number generated on this document is through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. However, there are some revenues that haven't been booked yet that are from February and March.
Yeah, but what, yeah, we're expecting.
We, we didn't make no thirty-six thousand.
I am not the, I'm not the director of Parks and Recs, but I'm telling you right now that.
Well, he said next to you. Do you expecting more money, that much money?
He even said that he's, he's assuming that maybe they were not properly quoted. To my knowledge, we are behind on booking revenues into the system to properly show the through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Are you, are you more comfortable with forty thousand or fifty things?
Right now, right now I'd be comfortable with forty because I don't understand why there's such a big gap. When I looked at it, I, I looked at it like, like I don't understand. So I, I need to do some more information in it. What we've been concentrating on is Smart reimbursements. Uh, we are seriously way behind on getting reimbursed from Smart. So we, our staff is, believe me, been working on it. We are two years behind. So by hopefully the end of the day or end of this week, we'll be submitting all these charges to Smart and they'll be reimbursing us about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and, and I'll tell you, that will never happen, that we'll get that far behind. We just finished, we had CBG that we were six to eight months behind, tremendous amount of paperwork. That was put in. We got that all caught up. So that's where a lot of our time is going, is, is catching up with old things, you know? And to me, when, whenever I look at things and look at ways to make money, some of it's just me doing paperwork. The paperwork is huge, it's huge piles, it's this high, but it brings it money. You know, Senior Alliance did that, ten thousand dollars, boom. You know, the Smart stuff, it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. We'll know that shortly as we add that up. Um, we have other, you know, things that we get reimbursed for, especially from Smart. So there's, there's lots of revenue coming in from that area that, that is just completely different. It's just reimbursements that, that we're entitled to and then we're working on that every day. You know, and clearing, and right now we're clearing that up. So it's kind of hard to move forward because we're still trying to get caught up. Um, but we've made that, that's our mission right now. So we'll be seeing that, you know, shortly, you know, that revenue, getting those contracts and that money in. So.
Okay, let's move on on this one, please.
Okay.
What's the next one?
Uh, one zero one zero 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 six seven five zero zero zero.
Six seven five, okay.
We are budgeting eighty thousand dollars of revenue, uh, for next fiscal year.
Wait, six seven one zero 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 zero.
Six seven five.
Oh, six seven five, okay. Donations, okay, and Summer Fest. We're going to change that name. Councilman Wanto, you going to put it in for us? Please?
Yeah?
Yeah, please put a placeholder for that. We're going to change the name back. Yeah, please. I, I, I'm going to put that in. I'm going to have a resolution back immediately. If every council member is okay with that, I'll put all our names on there. Thank you. And, and if I hear things like, oh my God, we already started marketing and we can't do that, bull crap.
Yeah.
He's got signed.
Council chair, I mean, I'm not, it's not too much since it's going to be the Eid too. I mean, make a spirit backslash Eid fest or that's.
No.
Not every year the Eid is going to fall.
Not, not just for this year.
I mean, I'm sure we could do an event there, that day, like for, for Eid, but I don't think we should be putting Eid on it. It's my opinion. Unless you like. No, I don't, I don't, I don't. Not just that it changes, but like there's going to be beverages sold and Islamically it's not the thing to say, so I, I'm not.
Yeah.
We have to, the only thing we have to check with is.
Yeah, yeah.
Antonio's. Let's just leave it at this. I think it just needs to be called the Spirit Festival. I, I hate the name Summer Fest. I hate it.
Yeah, I do too.
Maybe we could have Summer Fest though. Maybe we could do like a Summer Fest on the south end of Dearborn Heights and we should. We can call it, we can call it the Summer Fest. There you go.
The Big Fest. Lance, do you even drink? All right. I want to hear it.
Even water? Yes. Oh, man, we just checked with Antonio's about the change in the revenue. I will.
What is?
You know what I want you to write down too? I want you to write a, I mean, I'm sure it's way too short to get it this year, but we need to have a Memorial Day parade in the city of Dearborn. No, we used to have it.
Next year.
There's definitely needs to be one. And we're, and we're going to walk from the fire station and, and the south end and we're going to walk to, you know, then that's what we should do.
Where?
Headwigs. Or stick hose, dip hose. This is the cost. We're going to make so much money.
On Memorial Day Parade?
On Memorial Day Parade, everybody's going to want to donate to support every business owner.
Every flow is a sponsor.
We need to start thinking. You think right now when Hypatletic does their, does their, uh, festival every year? How much it costs Hypathetics? Zero dollars.
Hmm.
Because everybody donates to the cause. And, yeah. And you know who could do greater helping us, uh, raise money for that? Councilman Wanto. He's great at it. I'm being serious.
And those are the connections, are the connections, uh, that we need. I know for, you know, what we go through to collect money for the, the homecoming in Dearborn, which is usually about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but we have a lot of big companies to tap there. Ford Motor Company, Car Hard.
Ford actually, you want to know the funny thing? I don't mean to cut you off. Ford actually bailed last year. You know who the, you know who the number one sponsor was for that event was last year?
Our toy company.
J T Kova donated fifty thousand dollars to be the number one sponsor. You know where they're located? In the heart of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, well, that's great.
Maybe we call J T Kova Wednesday. We say, you come out and, and you know what? You put fifty thousand on the city that you're in.
I already sponsored them, I ended the city.
Just for background, our plan to collect money was if you do business with the city of Dearborn, we're going to ask you to be a supporter of the homecoming.
Hundred percent.
Because we're paying you, you can give a little back. And, and that's where a lot of the donators, donations came from.
All right, let's move forward.
Let's move forward, I think. Memorial Day Parade. Great. Maybe this year.
Be on the wish list. Uh, just before we move on.
I agree.
And before we move on, uh, we are adjusting senior trips to forty thousand?
Yes.
George? Senior trips from seventy-five to forty thousand.
Stretch in?
Yeah.
Little space.
So now we're going to do the budget, so.
Yeah. So that's the one zero one zero 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 six eight two point zero zero zero, which is reimbursement from, from Smart. That is projected for next year at one, one sixty-six four five two.
Is it because of Smart is behind or because we're behind in billing?
We're behind. We've, we've not submitted since twenty twenty-three for reimbursements. So that's what we're.
Wait, can you say that out loud?
We, we have not submitted for reimbursements from Smart since twenty twenty-three.
Why?
Uh, the explanation I just gave you was we're too busy to get to it. So.
How much money we're talking about? How much money? How much, how much money we're talking about?
A hundred thousand. We, we're taking a hundred thousand dollars.
A year or since twenty-three?
Since twenty-three.
About fifty.
I mean, it may be more, maybe less. We, we don't know. We, we, we are.
And who's, who's supposed to file for that?
Parks and Recs.
Parks and Recs, yeah.
The, the former director.
Yes, yes. So, but we, you know, everything, we're sitting up, yeah. We're getting everything up. That's why that is our, that was our number one priority because that's a huge amount of money.
No, it's not really. We didn't pay for it. Does not open, right? We're, we're in court. It's not a issue. I think this is that, can we do an audit of the department?
I think this is that, can we do an audit of the department eventually to see what else hasn't been collected or?
I, you know, I I do that every day.
I know, and 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 honestly, I appreciate you that, because I know, to be honest with you, I I had my own views about the department. And we're openly, hopefully we're moving in the right direction, but clearly priorities were not set straight. The former director, and that's the honest truth. We're too busy posting signs and are, you're saying that we have all this money, we're losing off on that wasn't priority. While we're using money from fund balance, and we were misled, that money was being set aside. It doesn't matter.
I know.
Council, what time you guys talk for a past half an hour?
I know, but we're going, we're still talking about the budget.
It doesn't matter, I'm talking. Uh, she went about. And we, the sign that you brought last week for us to pay, the motion was put forward. And if you watched the meeting, the meeting said that it was money that she found in the regular recreation uh budget. That money came out of the fund balance.
Thank you, Councilman, go ahead, Director.
Let's move on. Okay, so with that, we're gonna be moving on to the expenses. Expenses are gonna be page twenty five.
So when you um, you look at uh the expenses for supplies, I mean. Utilities are utilities, they are what they are, you know, we're we're dealing with four community centers, two senior centers. And two recreation centers, they're all large.
I I I have a question about the community centers. Have we did a energy audit on any of them?
Absolutely, no.
Okay, can we get those? Because those are provided through our utility company.
What is it, Councilman? What is it?
Our energy audits.
Energy audit?
Yeah, where they cut the, you know, change the light bulbs and um find the ways to make the building more efficient.
I would say, because when we look at some of our facilities, just just from my quick view. I can tell you, the senior center uh centers are pretty good because they have a lot of rooms. And when they're not using those rooms, the lights are off and and they don't use, you know, a lot of lights. Are they, are they energy efficient? Oh, no, they're old buildings, the the windows, the doors, the heat, some of the boilers, the heater, the heating systems.
But the thing is, those programs are no cost to the city for that. You could please chuck into that, because that could cost.
All of our windows would be Richard A M Center, uh, not to rechange, but the Berwin Center, all brand new. Hassan Jamal, good man.
Right, so. I think, and I know at Berwin, for the the colder month we just had, what was it, like February? The D T bill was about, I think, ten thousand dollars. We we file all, we just finished filing all the C B G paperwork, like the last six to seven months. I don't really see that, I just get the paperwork and send it into C B G and and. I'm not a a hundred percent sure how that's all handled. But they do, they they supposedly, that re-applications, they account for for personnel salaries. And and uh several expenses that that we do recover, we recover a lot. If we can take all those into consideration, but I I'm not exactly sure how those are coded into our budgets. So, yeah, rec programming, I mean, do you see um ninety five thousand for rec programming? That's everything, that's every event we do, everything we buy. Um, that cover, and that covers not only our buildings. Um, you know, and and fitness equipment and fixing basketball things and and everything we do there. Uh, it also is our our uh athletic fields, um, our parks, picnic tables, ev- everything. So let me tell you, ninety five thousand doesn't go very far when you're trying to take care of every park, every picnic table. Paying for the services that those parks all have, we we really do a lot with very little. We just now, you know, put bases at, all the swap the fields, they had no pins or pegs. And they all have new bases now on all fields, we put the the like the little league uh uh. Field back into shape, and we're working on every shelter, and we're doing things that don't cost us a lot of money, we're using a lot of paint. We're we're painting, we're fixing benches, replacing split boards, I mean, we're adding, you know, repairing, you know, playground equipment. That money just goes really fast.
We still have like thirty eight thousand for this fiscal year, do you think you're gonna go through it or in the next couple of months?
We we are trying to, we're trying to spend every dollar we can to get, we're trying to get things up to the level they should be. Because there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of broken things, I I mean, we can't have broken swings, we can't have broken slides, we we can't have missing bolts. You know, we've got uh, you you're Van Houten, and you know, you look at the grill, there's no bottom to it. The chart, there's nowhere to even put the charcoal, falls right through it, we gotta put a new grills in, you know, picnic tables, I mean, the list is on and on and on, so. We're trying to at least get it to a reasonable level.
Just going back to the senior trips, uh, I know they're still about. Close to over thirty five thousand in the budget, do you think we still need that much for the next couple of months, or is there any more invoices coming in?
I mean, yes, they're they're, we have a really active uh senior trip program. I mean, they average two trips a week, every week, uh, all over the place. Um, in fact, I just checked the budget uh last week on the uh. The uh, the funds for that, I think there's only like five thousand dollars left for trips. Because the coordinator was asking me if they could do anymore, I said, you have five thousand dollars, that's it, you're you're done for the year, so we're pretty much, you know. We have enough, I mean, we already got some plans.
So already went through a hundred and twenty eight thousand, that's saying?
A hundred we have. Yes. And and they're on, they're on the go all the ti- I mean, if you're, if you're a senior here, you've got some of the best trip programs I've ever seen. They are always on the move. And they really enjoy it.
They're popular, they're waiting lists only, right? They they've got a lot of.
Some of them are waiting lists, um, you know, uh. But uh, some of them, I mean, most of them sell out, most of them we, we have to make more room on, you know, some, some we do don't, but uh. It is, we, we work, I mean, I work with Bridget, who puts this all together. We work really closely trying to find new experiences, because we've done so much, they go everywhere. And I think it's the greatest thing there is for these seniors, they always can get out, they can always, and it's super affordable, I mean. It, you know, we make, we we get most of our money back, you know, obviously from Smart, they give us the buses and. And our drivers get, everything we almost spend on that whole program is reimbursed through Smart. You know, the drivers, the the maintenance of the buses, I mean, we were just at a fish fry last week and uh, somebody shot the window out of the bus uh. Uh, with a B B gun, and you know, it's at Smart right now, getting a new window, but I mean, all that's covered and all's reimbursed to us. And that's what those bills are that I'm putting together right now, we'll get all that money back. Um, but uh, I want to, you know, it's really hard, you you can't really raise much money from a senior trip program. Because we're keeping it affordable for them.
You're telling me we've been making thirty five thousand and costing us hundred and twenty five thousand, and we haven't been getting the money from Smart? That's what you're basically saying?
That's exactly it, yes. So once I bring the Smart money in, you'll you'll see a huge difference.
Seniors first.
Yes, yes, it is, it is, uh, they're super important, I mean, I think. Right now, they have the best thing, I mean, who has two senior centers, and they're both really, you know, they they love them. They use them all the time, there's high traffic in them, I'm in there talking to them all the time, they have great programs, great facilities, I mean. Uh, there's, there's, eh, there's, they're almost second to none, I mean. Some some do have newer and be- better ones, but I think for what we have, i- it's it's pretty ma- but it is expensive. Maintain two, two elementary, former elementary schools as a whole center, that is a lot of space. Um, to keep up with, and I mean, you think about it, we have one custodian, part time, four days a week. And one coordinator and a lot of volunteers that that make all that work, so. Um, I I think it's pretty amazing what we're able to get out of that, that amount of money and people, and keep it going, and not to mention, you know. We're there every Thursday at one of the centers, you know, with Forgotten Harvest, I mean, that's amazing, I mean, you go in there, it's like going to a grocery store. I mean, it's not like second rate food, it's good. I I would fill up my basket if I could, you know, it's, you know, it's fresh meats, it's it's really good stuff, it's not like something that's expired. So, I mean, the services we give them on a fixed income, uh, it it's amazing, they love it. And and we all have to work on it, I mean, that's why we're working between collecting money and then on Thursdays, all of us in the office are out there. Uh, helping Forgotten Harvest, because that's a requirement for us to to get those services, so, I mean, we're really, we're all really pretty pushed. Every day on everything we do.
Yeah, I've been to both senior centers for years and the trips, we've got the bus system, but we got the best program for our seniors here, I think, out of anybody locally. Because we do have some people come from the neighboring cities on our trips. And you listen to how bad their cities are as far as taking care of the seniors, they don't have the programs we do.
Uh, absolutely, I mean, we really use, we have a twenty eight passenger bus and a couple like twelve, fifteen passengers. Right now, I'm talking to Smart, I wanna give them their their twelve passenger buses back and see if they'll give us another twenty eight. Um, because we need a twenty eight every single time, and it saves us having two drivers, just one driver. And when the one breaks down, I can't tell you, we we had that happen a couple of weeks ago, and then we had to call a couple of drivers from home. And get, you know, two of our small buses, because we can't, we can't do that, so, you know, we're trying to make those improvements now, but that's how popular, they're usually always filled up. And I think, and and when I was looking at, when we were, when I was talking to the transportation, all of our people about the buses, and that we needed a bigger bus. Um, we also looked at the date of the buses, and and we just need some newer buses that have, you know, the better features for us. So, yeah, so we're we're looking at all of it, I mean, and just, let's put it this way, in sixty days, I haven't missed anything almost. I mean, I'm running around everywhere, talking to everybody, trying to solve every problem and find out how I can get a new bus. You know, I mean, seniors even wanted added seats, you can't make that happen, but um, but I mean, we're, you know, we're working on, we're looking at every way. To make everything better and more efficient for everybody.
Director, um, this uh Smart money, you anticipate any issues and being cut at any time? You know, there are these budgets and federal money's being cut, state money, do you think uh, this is like a for sure thing, or how how guaranteed is that?
You know, I'm not completely, you know, aware of anything like that, but probably a lot of that Smart money is all really from county and state funding. That goes into that Smart account to make Smart work, it's all through tax dollars, you know, from our local tax dollars, Wayne County taxes. You know, we voted to, you know, support the Smart system, and that's just their way of creating the community trans, you know, transit for everybody. So, um, I I don't really see that happening.
Yeah, I'll take it's federal funds.
I I know, I said like federal funds being cut, I know, I said definitely mission funds, for sure.
Yeah, I I don't see it unless uh, we vote that we don't want Smart anymore.
Yeah, okay, so it's pretty much a sure thing, that's great, that's great. Get that money back. All right, let's go and get that.
Oh, the line items, um, if you look under after um, uh, rec programming for Spirit Fest, sixty thousand. Uh, we've made a whole bunch of cuts there, uh, just so, but it's all going toward entertainment, I mean, entertainment's expensive, good entertainment's even more.
You know, I know like Dearborn gives like really good entertainment, like really good.
I know they do, and I can tell you what their budget is for this year for their entertainment, it's two hundred thousand dollars.
Just entertainment.
Just entertainment, so that's usually, the majority of that goes to the headliner on Saturday night. That's probably gonna be a hundred, a hundred and.
What do they have this year?
I don't know yet, yeah, they haven't announced it yet. Yeah, I saw you there last year, right?
But you see how many people come out because of really good live entertainment, there was, I think they said there was close to like eight to ten thousand people. Yeah.
Yeah, but they have the space at Fort Field, we don't have that space. You're correct, they they have, they have a space, the Fort Field is great for this, it's almost like a natural amphitheater. Um, so, that's, that's a big plus for it, um, but the entertainment, the entertainment's what brings the crowd, let's just be real, you know.
Some of the parks larger.
We can't even shut, we can't even shut down like a a certain area, like Beach Daily down to, you know, something or.
A lot of cities do that, you're right, they shut down their main, but we got the fire department there too, we gotta make sure they have that.
No, not Fort Road, I mean.
Beach Daily.
We'll 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 figure it out, we'll figure it out, okay, let's just, I know, but we're getting excited, we're, you're just, you're doing a great job, but I think.
It it takes time to build it, and and obviously, you get what you pay for, you know, if you have a sixty thousand dollar budget to do a whole festival, it's gonna be pretty tight. You know, but we're going to, or at least I'm going to make it sound like it's the best festival in the world, you know, to to get it up and going and get people excited about coming to it. Um, but uh, yeah, it just, y- y- you have to spend money to make money.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Um, just we have fifteen thousand repair and maintenance, that's not a lot of money, but uh, that kind of keeps us uh up and going. And the rest is really kind of uh, is utilities, yeah, utilities, things like that. Any other questions for our director?
Director, um, in the past years, there was, there was a complaint, I guess I could say that, or complaint about. Um, high school entertainment, uh, that was provided by, entertained by the high schools, and that there was particular schools were. Only being represented, and uh, the question was answered by, it was put out to all the high schools and only one responded. We make a real effort to get all of our three major high schools involved in this?
We we can, y- you know, if they're interested, you know, surprisingly enough, sometimes, it's just.
It's 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 a tree lighting ceremony, Crestwood, in Annapolis and Robesaw and Lake Westwood. You know, D seven and and the Crestwood School District, they didn't invite everybody, they would only invite Crestwood. And it was offensive, because this is a citywide thing, I know that you have a choir from Crestwood, but. Other other schools wanted to be a part of that, and so it was really, it was ugly.
Right, well, that's, that's good to hear, because that's, that was my concern, is to get.
Then you got the parents coming, and then the neighbors are coming, and then word's getting out, more people are gonna show.
Out due respect, the uh, the former director had a meeting, said that they had reached out to the schools and didn't get a response. I don't know how, how much they pursued it.
She asked full schools ten years ago. And.
Things change, people change that are in charge of them.
And and I think, obviously, the tree lighting is totally different, and I already talked to all the um, Annapolis and um, Westwood, Crestwood. Uh, students and honor students that were there, and I just kind of let them know, like, this is what we're gonna be doing in the future, and this is what we're gonna need. And kind of give them a little snapshot of what it was, to kind of build up some excitement, and basically said, all of you who are not seniors and you're juniors. We we want you to be part of this program, um, and uh, and I'll be talking to the the um, Crestwood, you know. Theater drama teachers, same thing over at uh, Annapolis, and uh, of course, we'll we'll include in the Westwood and the other schools. To see if they can get students to feed into this, because we we need them for for what we're doing.
Let's definitely not forget the Westwood School District, I think they've been uh, neglected a little bit, maybe not not intentionally, I'm sure, but uh. It's it's pushing a little bit to get more involved, I mean, we, that's part of the city, large part of our city.
Right, and. And it it sounds great, and you know, when they get, when they get a good concept that they like, and it's gonna be fun. Um, they'll just gravitate to it, we we seem to know, we seem to know that, I know a really great theater director that that can prove that point. So, um, so we're working on it.
Director, for the outlet, you asked for sixty thousand, does that include the twenty thousand you mentioned for uh, Canfield or?
Uh, what that was basically for was just a few items, it was, it was really three items. It was Canfield, let me see what it was, it was Canfield for just the tables and chairs. Um, tables, chairs and wall treatments, that was twenty two thousand dollars to bring in thirty. And then at Young Center, I wanna put in my own vending machines, um, that's gonna cost uh, for, well. They're gonna cost six thousand one hundred ninety three dollars for the vending machines, uh, there's a rebate of thirteen hundred dollars. So, cost of the machines after the rebates, forty eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. The revenue from the beverage and snack machines should be about forty one thousand dollars a year. And uh, that's, we are hoping even to bring in more just from, we're hoping people from the the baseball fields will will come in. And and, you know, buy snacks and water and things like that, um, but right now, that 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 was the, one of the revenue sources. Uh, we identified that would be really good for the Young Center and and.
Instead of buying a vending machine, don't, some companies, they have, they bring, they bring them to you and you make profit?
That's what we have now.
That's what we have now, but you know what, I I've never, never liked that system, the the um. Commissions that we've got from those uh, young machines, it's been about seven hundred. The, the um commissions that we've got from those uh young machines has been about seven hundred dollars.
A year?
Uh is what I've seen on the books right now. So I don't expect it to be much more, I never liked the program, there's no way to police it. It's always been that way, I would just rather just get our own, own machines, I know they're empty all the time. And we feel by us refilling them all the time and making sure they're full, that that will do very well with them.
Now I have a question, what about buying a few used ones, just to test it, to see if it's gonna work out before we invest in a brand new one? I think we were leasing them.
Yeah, most, most, most machines are leased, I mean, I think when it comes to vending machines, I would rather get new ones, these come with a uh a one-year warranty and uh we want to start fresh and make sure we're not dealing with the machines that are gonna break down. They've really come a long way, anti-theft devices on them, you know, obviously the card readers to take, uh you know, uh electronic payments. That's what everybody's using, the kids go there, that's what they're using all the time, so we want to be really up to date.
Meanwhile, since we don't have the money, I think maybe we should reach out to different companies that do better business than the one we have right now and maybe negotiate better profit. And we have the money to invest in some of our own.
I I can tell you, I've worked that for many years in Dearborn and I've never seen a decent check come in. Uh I just, I just don't think they're really honest about telling us what they're selling, I mean, they're there to, you know, when you see these kind of dollars that come in.
It's, yeah, it's a small, it's a small cost for a potentially larger profit, I I agree with what you're saying.
Right, but and the thing is with everything, once we get past that first year, then we're really making money, you know. We're getting, after we've recovered the costs from those machines, but you know, when I look at, you know, forty eight hundred dollars to bring in forty one thousand, does anybody wanna take that deal? I mean, I would.
Forty one thousand, you think?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. How did you come up with that number?
Um we take the, I I have the formula, I have it in my office, how and how that comes up. I can tell you the margins are really high on, on, on snacks, water, I mean, they, they're really high margins on those things. Um so they're, they're just, machines are really profitable, that, it's, I mean, that's kind of the bottom line.
Can we buy that machine with the American Express points?
Let's look at Amazon.
Is it Amazon?
Sure, they got it on there, bro.
I'm serious, I mean.
Oh, really? That might be a good thing.
I mean, you know, I could go and buy a combo machine that sells both, but I think they'll be so busy, I I'll be sorry I did it. You know, because they make them, they have soft drinks and snacks.
You know, my only fear is, is that we, we use this money, we, you know, I would prefer them to make no cash. Not to be directly uh credit cards, no cash. And so that that money is being properly watched, sent straight to our treasures department, we gotta make sure that we're constantly filling these things up. And and that's. Because it's all kids, they're not gonna.
I guess, you know, when we look at stuff like this, the, my, my policy is, I want to make it as easy as possible for you to buy something, so you have money or you have whatever.
Uh large combo vending machine for three thousand eight hundred dollars on Amazon.
Yeah, we can use the phone.
There's three thousand nine hundred.
Let's make sure that we can show.
Guys, hang on, the only, the only.
Leave it to the director to make that decision, right?
And I'll tell you one of my requirements for the machine is, I was only buying machines made in America. Because I know I can get parts and I know I can get service.
Good.
I like that answer, so that was, that was one of the, the main things.
I don't see where it's at.
Yes, let's, let's leave, yeah, let's leave it to the, let's continue on to the Richard Ayers.
The Richard Ayers Young Center was actually uh built into the Parks and Rec, so there's no, there aren't two different departments.
I know, but I'm looking at, it's at the next page.
I, on the budget meeting, it did, but if you look on page twenty six, there is no budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six because we added it all into.
Okay.
The six nine one account.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're done with that, thank you so much, Director. Thank you.
Human Resources, Civil Service, and X seventy eight.
Yep. So Human Resources is personnel page uh seven, our new HR director, I believe, is on here with us, is that correct? Mister Fisher? Yeah, thank you, unmute, I mean, maybe he can introduce himself.
We have a new HR director named Mister Fisher. Oh, I'm sorry, uh Maddy, what, what page is it?
Uh page seven on the personnel sheet and page fourteen on the budget.
Uh before we begin this. You know, never mind. Mister Fisher?
Hello? Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, hey there, Mister Fisher.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pleasure.
Pleasure, congratulations and welcome to the city of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you, I am excited to be a part of the team.
Thank you very much. Uh Maddy, you wanna start?
Yes, so, um just so you're aware, speaking to the mic, please, yes. Sorry, I'm trying to multitask. So for the HR department, the HR director wasn't given a two percent raise. Instead, we are requesting a budget of a hundred thousand dollars based on comparables for various cities. Uh so with that being said, there's a hundred thousand dollar salary for the HR director and a sixty three thousand dollar salary for the HR specialist, budgeted. As for the budget itself, page fourteen. So the one sixty five eight two seven is directly from the personnel page number seven. And then you have a part-time employee or employees, if you need multiple employees, up to thirty five thousand dollars. Overtime is at five hundred dollars, hospital insurance, life insurance, general government pension and fringe benefits are all benefit calculations based on the salaries and the number of employees in the department. The supplies, we are budgeting three thousand dollars for the supplies account. And then, I'm not sure why, there's five thousand dollars in the material supplies. So this, they should be combined to eight thousand dollars for both combined.
Say that again?
Sorry about that, what?
You know, I missed where you.
Uh so it's seven, uh account seven two eight and account seven three zero is pretty much the same account.
Okay.
Those are technically duplicate accounts in the system, so we worked this year to combine both accounts. So it is gonna be eight thousand for supplies to seven two eight account. And then the dues and memberships, that's five hundred dollars. Contractual services, that's a hundred seventy thousand dollars requested, requested budget, recommended budget. Uh the contractual service is our benefits advisor. And then contract, uh like contract lawyers, when uh we deal with contract negotiations with unions. We have legal uh advice and legal assistance on those. And then the travel and education, we.
That's a, that's a big jump, ew. Which one?
That is something that the administration felt is needed based on the contract negotiation that need to be taken, that will be taking place in the following year.
Contractual services? Because what happens is every year that they try to say that we need to hire somebody to help us out with our new contractual services.
Um I will say this, a hundred thousand dollars is the benefit advisor for like health benefits, which we're trying to um find different vendors that can offer better services for a cheaper price.
Yeah, but I mean, the reality is, guys. I mean, I think we can go to one fifty, but I think one seventy is very high.
Okay, we can go to one fifty for that.
And also, let's make it clear that we already voted on this budget for the HR. And it's still at seventy eight, we think, we did not approve that, so please keep that, as well as the deputy, we also didn't approve that uh pay increase.
There wasn't a deputy.
Sorry, not the deputy, but the specialist.
The HR specialist is the employee that's already there, the confidential secretary was the one that was, the third employee that was proposed previously. But not on this budget, HR specialist is the one where.
We also want you to know that the HR director did not receive any type of raise and it's not, it shouldn't be added in this budget either.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that he received a raise, we are requesting it to be a hundred thousand dollars this upcoming year. If you do not feel like you wanna give that and you wanna go back to.
No, we wanted to keep it at where it was, as the past.
The last meeting. And it was rejected.
We were, you guys said the two percent raise, this was not part of the two percent raise, this was a.
I understand.
No, I understand, I'm just letting you know why it wasn't removed at that point in time. So if you'd like me to drop it down to seventy eight thousand seven hundred fifty, I do want to give you a heads up. The, an HR director makes more money and you are not gonna get the level of expertise and qualifications for seventy eight thousand seven hundred fifty.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead and make that change, give me one minute.
George, can you put that in there, please?
Thank you.
I'm sure we will. Uh so the two percent increase, it's, uh only covers who?
That the non-union uh employees, the directors, deputy directors. Um and that counter position in the comptroller department, but you guys.
So the specialist, HR specialist, is that a union?
No, that's a non-union position, it's the one right outside the HR director's office.
Yeah, do they get, uh.
Where Cameron used to sit, yes.
Do they get the two percent?
Uh that was part of it, but at the beginning of the council meeting, the council chair, Adrian, said to remove those two percent raises. No, I'm just saying if they covers that too.
Thank you. No, we said leave the two percent to the end, we would make the decision.
Oh, so leave until the end.
The two percent we can figure out, let's see where the deficit attack.
Okay.
What about the confidential secretary?
We removed it.
They removed it, good.
The confidential secretary wasn't even presented.
Yeah, it was just requested, it was never put in.
So if you look at the personnel sheet, there's only two employees in that department.
Thank you.
One moment, let me make this note. And then we have travel and education at four thousand and then training at twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand dollars for training?
Give me one moment, I can tell you where that number came from.
We, we used to be at. Doesn't show like how much we spent so far, changes in the law and we wanna recompense.
Yeah, but I mean, we've, twelve thousand's a lot of money, training.
All the department gets that, I'd be okay with ten. Let, let's see how much is uh the expense of part. Zero.
Yeah, so expense of part is zero, um that, since the director is new, I don't know exactly if he would be able to tell you exactly what the training was for. Maybe it wa, I'm assuming this was for training for the previous HR director before he uh resigned from his position. And I'm not sure exactly what that twelve thousand dollars entails.
Remember, they gotta administer all the, the lease tests, fire department tests, civil service tests. That's the way.
Those are actually in X seventy eight and Civil Service Commission.
You think you need a twelve thousand, we, we, we use zero dollars this year.
Yes, of course, zero, yeah.
Mister Fisher would have an idea? Can I talk to Mister Fisher real quick, can you unmute him? If you mind, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
Hey, Mister Fisher, just got a couple of questions for you and I promise not to badger you, were you an HR director or have any HR experience in the past?
Yes, sir, I have over sixteen years of HR experience.
Nice, where at?
I was uh at the city of Ypsilanti as the HR director for about three or four years. I've served at DTE Energy, um at a law office as well. Uh I've served the last eight years of my life in my career in the HR director seat.
Okay, thank you so much, do you think you need twelve thousand dollars in training?
With the new laws that is changing, uh and again, I'm not for sure, I haven't, I meet with Cameron tomorrow to sit down and kind of go over a few things, uh I'm not sure what programs that they had, this is my third day on the job. But I do believe that it can be necessary in order to get everyone up to speed. Um and then understanding what is coming out of that budget, whether it is, I, I, I'm not sure what, what's coming out of the budget at this point. Um I'm trying to get my hands wrapped around it now.
Okay. Okay, uh let's put a question mark next to it, George. And Mister Fisher, if you could, if you don't mind, uh just emailing us uh what your thoughts are and and whatever you could do to help the city, that would be great. But we also want to make sure that you're fully equipped, so if you need it, great, but if you can, you say, hey man, I only need like eight, that would be awesome.
Yes, sir, I'll take a deeper dive and uh follow up with the email to the council.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
So next up is gonna be civil service, that is gonna be page eleven, there is no personnel sheet, since it's just a board.
Yep.
We have commission fees of ten thousand dollars, that's paying the civil service commissioners uh for their meetings and their interviews. Um professional contractual service, that's twelve thousand, that is primarily the medical examinations for new hires. And then publication and newsletters, that's twenty five hundred, that's when, whenever you're putting publications regarding uh job openings and civil service updates, uh that is where that amount is. Any uh, any questions regarding civil service commission?
That's it. Next is X seventy eight.
X seventy eight, similar to civil service commission, except it's regarding police and fire. You have the commissioner fee and fees, which is ten thousand dollars. And then for this, the professional contractual service is actually fifty thousand. Uh because the background checks are more extensive for police and fire, uh police officers.
Uh so, uh commission fees, why is that it? Is that why they're, uh, why you, why, why we pay the commissioners, you mean?
Uh so you pay the commissioner fees to uh certain commissions, I believe. And then this fees paid to, um whenever some, a firefighter or a police officer is hired or interviewed. They have an external uh firefighter or police officer come in and sit on the board for an interview. And you pay that person two hundred dollars, I believe.
Okay, so how come we only just spent twenty eight hundred so far out of the ten thousand?
That is assuming that they didn't have as many interviews compared to what they anticipated.
You think we need to adjust that number, because even the year before, we didn't even spend.
If you'd like to drop the expense budget for that down, you can let me know and then I can make that adjustment.
Are you guys okay with dropping down maybe eight thousand?
I'm okay with that.
Let's drop it to eight. Uh the commission fees, line seven one, one two. From ten to eight thousand.
Okay, is there any other questions regarding X seventy eight commission?
No, sir.
With that being said, we went through all the departments on schedule for today, do you have any overall comments or?
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Maddy. Put it up, comments for the public, and I'll open it up to Zoom. You have two minutes, please state your name, the city residing on the street that Chilavon.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights, um couple of questions, mainly for Maddy, if I may. Um the business licenses, um well, this one's maybe more for you guys or the administration in general. Historical data, I've collected a lot of old budgets and stuff and put the actual numbers into a spreadsheet and stuff. Um historically, we were making, like, on average, thirty K a year from business licenses, thirty thousand dollars. If it's only like ten or fifteen now, did sixty six percent of our businesses in the city shut down? I don't see a lot of empty storefronts. So I'm concerned that there's a lot of businesses that are not properly licensed. And that by not making sure that um our process of making sure that somebody, when they start a business that they're getting to the clerk's office and getting that final business license, that we're really on that. I don't know exactly where the, you know, gap is, but something's going on there that seems very odd to me. Um and then I had a question, I know we didn't talk about building and engineering today. But it was having to do with the revenues and I was watching the meeting from last week, so I've done some research on um restricted funding and I believe that building and engineering, if we, if we're collecting money for licenses and fees and things, that it has to kind, it's restricted to be used for that department. And right now, the revenues are far exceeding the building and engineering department's budget. But I also don't know if maybe that would include some of water or other things that brings into that. So I don't know if you know the answer to that one.
Uh that is correct, so it's not just the building and engineering budget, but overall, any engineering or building services that might not be budgeted in that specific department.
Okay, so it would.
I was told by Plan Moran that um the expenses exceed the revenue generated, so we cover.
So we're clear on that, okay, good, that's really good, I was a little worried, but great, good news. Um and then welcome to the new HR director.
Thank you, thank you. Uh Mrs. Lapointe, where did you get the estimate from for the businesses? Mrs. Lapointe, where did you get the estimate from, for the businesses?
So I've collect, I've collected old budgets, um, the old budget documents, and you know how it has like the actual for the previous year? Um, and I've put them into a spreadsheet.
Thank you. And every year, there were thirty, 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 thirty?
Uh, not exactly, but like ranging between thirty to forty in past years, and I can, you know, sit down with whoever and show you what I got, and see if it matches up to our actual records, I don't know if there's some sort of discrepancy there, but something seems off.
No, we charge almost everybody, I, I mean, everybody pays for anything. Didn't the clerk come up with that?
Have a list of the businesses that didn't pay. Unless it was a new business.
Yeah, yeah. Is it between you and the ordinance department, not between you and the building department?
The expired businesses?
Like all the businesses, the business list, like, don't they have to?
We have the business list, as far as those that are licensed. Now, whether or not they come to us, I don't know if businesses have a packet, and what, they started the building department, if it's a new business.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, don't they tell them they have to go to you for a license? They shouldn't even issue probably a CVO until a business license, uh, paid for.
But in, in order to get a business license, you need a CVO.
Right.
She gave us, this a while ago, had, had several, a lot of businesses that weren't licensed, that didn't have to renew their license. There was, there was a lot of.
Yeah, I think the treasurer sent it to us.
No, the clerk's office.
Oh, it was the clerk's office?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, but I'm saying, somebody can get the CVO and not pay the license and move on. Private, they can do the final inspection, tell them you're clear, go pay your, uh, fees, then you can pick up the CVO, that's how they should be done. That's how it should be done. So maybe we need to, uh, get you somehow with Drake and figure out something with those.
Cause they're supposed to, but doesn't mean they, they do.
Exactly, just like when you order an inspection, they give you the invoice, tell them, go pay, then you come back with all your exactly when you do the inspection. It's the same thing, you're clear, inspection has passed.
Buy that procedure.
Yeah. Because most likely, once somebody's getting the CVO, um.
Well, you're done, right.
You're done, well, that's it. Any more questions from? Moving to Zoom, Madame Clerk? Okay, no hands, have a nice evening, everyone, Councilor. Thank you. Thank you for that, everybody, have a great day.